And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and our God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning to everyone. Good morning to everyone online. Commissioners present, Commissioner Fossett, I think is online. Yes, and Commissioners Sarber, Bebel, or Kaiser are present. Any additions to the agenda, Commissioners? Okay. Stay tuned, maybe.
Maybe.
Consent agenda, the minutes of February fourteenth. I'll move the minutes to be approved as written.
Second.
And moved by Commissioner Bebel, second by Commissioner Sarber, to approve the February fourteenth minutes as written, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brian?
Thumbs up.
Okay, motion unanimous, thank you.
That counts.
Couldn't unmute myself, sorry about that.
Comments from the public? Are anyone signed up to speak in person?
Two people I just saw walk by, I don't know if they're coming in or not, but.
We have the list.
Cash or buyers? Okay.
Like, Ralph's the only visitor here, present. No comments?
Morning, Ralph.
Thanks for coming.
Online, Krista, do you have anybody wishing to comment this morning?
You better tell them to raise their hands.
Please raise your hand if you wanted to engage in public comments this morning. Okay, hearing none. Thank you all. I apologize if I'm a little hard to hear today. New business. The main purpose of the meeting today was to do some pre-planning for the budget process with the Commission. This clears twenty-four and twenty-five budget. So guys, please come forward.
We're at the stand.
Big fire.
Oh, he's bringing. He'd be a what?
Let me unpull on my screen up here.
Our appointment was probably Montsalsbury's idea.
So, yeah, good morning, Commissioners, and spend a little time here on the fiscal year twenty-five capital budget priorities. Just to kind of set a little bit of groundwork as to how I'd like to see the presentation going. Discussion, I'd like to try and get through the majority of the slides and save as much discussion as we can until the last slide in the presentation because it's more comprehensive and I think will be a better discussion and make a little better use of our time instead of getting off track on individual slides before, but all that being said, if you have a question, please interrupt me or ask. This is your meeting, so just trying to be efficient and have good use of our time. So the other thing I wanted to do is set a little bit of a, set the table a little bit in terms of making sure we're all on the same page with what is a capital budget and, you know, how it works, whether financial statements and how it differs from the operating budget. And so, Krista, next slide. We have two budgets we'll be looking at this year that'll be combined on our final budget, which will go before the Budget Committee in May and then final approval after public hearings in June. And it all has to be filed with the county by June thirtieth, so you guys are probably well aware of this, been done in the past, so. Just for a little background or for anyone online that may not have as much understanding, there's the operating budget, which is more of a shorter term budget, just based on revenue and expenses from operations. And that's what a profit and loss statement is, or an income statement, where income minus expenses and how much, you know, hopefully positive profit or margin versus a negative margin, it can vary, as you know. And so that is still in process right now. We don't have the operating budget ready to discuss at this time. But we'll have it ready in April to talk about and we'll definitely be engaging with you on it, so. But I wanted to get a little bit of a, some guidance from you ahead of curve here on the capital budget. And the capital budget is a little bit different than operating budget, it's longer term. Looks at what the port invests in in terms of assets, like fixed assets, buildings, equipment improvements, upgrades to facilities, and, you know, any kind of change of use of a property or facility. And so that's kind of where, where we're going with the capital budget today is looking at that longer term horizon and looking at what we want to invest in as longer term assets for the port. Next slide. And so when we look at our financial statements, you generally see what we refer to as the income statement or the profit and loss. This is what a balance sheet looks like. And again, the income statement is based over revenue and expenses over a certain period, like it can be for the month or for the quarter, for the year, starting what we have and ending after that performance. A balance sheet differs where it's a snapshot in time, it's like as of June thirtieth, as this one is. It states our financial position with total assets, liabilities. And it kind of gives a net position of the difference of what our assets are and how much we owe on them or what obligations we have to pay, so. And out of that balance sheet, one of the section on assets is non-current assets. That's for assets that aren't liquid, you know, property, equipment, and all that stuff. And so we have depreciable capital assets. And that's where you, when you buy an asset, you pay for it over time using depreciation, it's an accounting function. The cash still needs to go out at one time to pay for the asset, but from an accounting basis, that can be spread over a number of years depending on what kind of asset it is. And that's something the accountants and auditors can help, you know, guide us on that. But that's how our financial statement works, work on a accrual basis versus a cash basis. And the port, just for references on a accrual basis, so. And so what I'm going to do now is go through some individual slides that show what our capital projects that the staff has identified with estimated numbers as for how much they're going to cost for fiscal year twenty-five. Instead on the later slides, you'll see that I mapped out the next three years, which would be fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And so that'll inform us a little bit more on what our future cash needs are. These slides are just going to be for fiscal year twenty-five. And we've talked as staff and identified projects based on what we think our needs are going to be over that time period, but starting with fiscal year twenty-five. So go ahead, Krista. So we'll start with Westward. It's one of our most positive producing revenue, you know, asset, and there's a lot of potential out there as well for additional revenue, according to what I understand as a relatively new member of the staff here, but. And so there's some things that are more or less required out there. And I can't remember the bill that was passed by the state, but it's, or seismic.
Senate Bill fifteen sixty-seven.
So these are things that we're going to have to do, and at the end of the presentation, Elliot can be further more specific than I can on exact things that need to be done in timeframe and everything. But we're estimating for FY twenty-five, seven, one point eight million. And then on Berth's one, two hundred and fifty thousand. And then some work on the fire system for seven hundred and fifty thousand. And so it's two point eight million roughly, and these numbers, as you'll see on the next slide, don't factor in grant revenue that we've seen, but I'll have that on the later slide.
Does it factor in insurance recovery?
Not, I don't believe on this, and Elliot can correct me.
Because the fire system for sure should have some.
This is separate from the fire system, that would be restoring the loop and designing for switching to the port providing the box supply.
But not the damage.
Is Austin included in the application? So the hope is that it ends up in.
Thank you.
Any questions right now? All right, next slide, Krista. So our next location is the airport, like kind of the total of one point seven five million on that for these projects, and that doesn't include, this doesn't net out the grants on this slide, we're just looking at the total amount, but I do refer to the grants that are secured, thankfully, by LACM staff have done a great job on getting these grants from FAA and ODEP, so. The Westside Payment Project, Emergency Generator, and Rehab all have pretty significant grant funding. The generator project is already in process and it's continuing on, as you know. And then there's the other projects, East Waterline Extension, it's been talked about. And then there's, staff has identified some additional things that could be started on the east side hangar demo. There's some that are in really poor condition and then design and engineering for future improvements where those hangars are torn down, so. Keep going here, next slide.
So I was going to say, guys, the grants add up to over nine hundred thousand dollars that the port staff takes, subtract that from the one point seven.
This is next year's.
Twenty-five, yeah.
Right. So the grant revenues forecasted for next year and already approved, or?
I believe these grants have all been secured. I'm not counting any potential ones that may still be out there that we're pursuing, but.
All of the grant funds that were posted up there, it's been appropriately signed, they're.
I'm trying to keep like a net income thing here, so what was the total grant amount?
That was nine oh five, those three.
That we're confident.
One point seven.
Yes, we have.
And that's reflected on the later slide.
I figured it was, but. Thank you.
We're making the work a little bit now, that feels true. Kermit won't, but. The next one, as you know, we've made a change on every other one. It's going to be the. Was on tracks for being constructive this next year, went over budget and this, as you'll see, I think it was a pretty wise decision to pause on that project, but we're looking at alternatives on that for a temporary, what we're considering temporary facility to take care of our maintenance staff and equipment and so on. And we've got a couple options on that, only two options, and in FY twenty-five, there'd be one option that's listed in FY twenty-six, but the two we have for FY twenty-five would be an option at Railroad Avenue for four hundred thousand is what estimated from staff. And that would include improving the entrance road from the north. The North Interest Road, I guess, there's got to be some easement work there plus gravel and, you know, some various other things, but not using the Bailey Bridge or investing anything in the bridge using the other access. And so as you'll see, this is a little bit higher cost than our next option. But it does add value to the property where it can be used for future activity out there, so it does suit the needs of the shop. But it also provides some residual value, so it wouldn't be like the money's just out the door, so. And that's what we're trying to look at is the money that we do use for the maintenance shop, that there is value, it's not just, you know, thrown away. So there's that consideration. This is on Railroad Avenue, we'll move to Multnomah next. And we just have one project cited for twenty-five and for Multnomah, and this would be kind of reworking the Winter Circle property there. I'm making some modifications so that facility and site could be used for maintenance shop and facility, and Marion can talk about it later if you have some questions, but looking at the sewer connection there, that city is going to be doing an inspection on that and kind of informing us if there's any upgrades they need. And then just modifications of the facility there for the maintenance. Guys, it's definitely not ideal, but given, you know, where we're at, but. That option.
Which is very expensive, the same thing with that also, if that was maintained and up and running, that would be another asset that could be leased.
Has direct road access as well. I think it has a pretty great deal of power ran to that shop too, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, my goal would be to hopefully at some point have to turn elves down because we have activity going there and they aren't able to do their hay right there, but I say that only because it's selfish interest on our part, but they are definitely interested in using the facility.
And remind me, when did the maintenance shop need to be vacated, the current shop?
February. Feb one, two thousand twenty-five.
Oh.
We've got another three months on that.
Oh, okay, so we have some wiggle room, yeah.
Basically, almost a year from now.
Yeah.
And so, next slide, Krista. We'll move on to Multi. Staff has identified some design and engineering work that could be done in preparation of some future improvements out there. For eighty-two thousand square foot, spec building and campus. Of course, there'd be a lot more information, details we need to consider before this, but we wanted to put a placeholder in for the two hundred thousand in case we could work it in the budget for twenty-five. But there'd be future commitments there too that we'd have to plan on, so. Then we'll move on to the Marina next. And again, these number, the top number three point five doesn't factor in the grants, but it will on a later spreadsheet, but the, we're looking at three and a half million dollars of funding for the Marina total. And then those grants will come out, which are like eight eighty-five, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, so roughly two point seven million, there's that, that range for port cash needs, and so the dredging is, these are just estimated, as we know, we're kind of getting those numbers burned up, and I know Marion can add a lot of context to this with some recent developments, but what can I, two and a half million there on dredgings, and then on a plan, it means eight hundred thousand. And then some in-water prep for future work in the water there in the Marina, that's not a plan. Looking at sixty-five thousand for that. And then I see the amount for the, oh, it's not on there, but on here, the service boat is our current boat that we use to maintain those slips, another shoreline infrastructure we have is pretty much not safe. When I got it out, there's, you know, there's holes in it, and they temporarily, temporarily fixed it, but, you know, it's not a long-term situation there, so we do need to look at a new service boat of some sort, just for safety and some major, you know, both safety of our staff, the safety around our facilities too, to maintain them, so.
Just be sure we communicate that well to the volunteers down there, because I think they built that boat, we take pride in it, I think they'll understand, it's been a long time, but.
They could probably donate it to them for.
Actually, yeah, I think I would.
As is.
Sorry, I shouldn't sound like that, but, yeah, no, it's a.
Served us for a lot of years.
Yeah.
And if you're keeping score, that raises the number to one point eight million in grants paid by port staff.
Great work by staff, of course. And I would say, just from my background, that dredging, getting grant funding for maintenance dredging is really hard, if not unheard of in many cases, and so having that extra funding for dredging is definitely a plus. Still a large price tag, but good contribution, so. Next slide, please. Just put in two placeholder amounts, and these could be in FY twenty-five, potentially going to FY twenty-six. But these would be for admin related capital investments in both our software or accounting. We currently got Microsoft Great Plains, which is, I don't remember exactly when it started here, I think it was before Bob Gaddati started, so it's been, you know, going on ten years, somewhere in there. And Microsoft's actually going to be phasing that, that software out and no longer servicing it in a couple of years, and so at some point, we're, we're going to have to make a change. But we also would benefit a lot from making a change sooner because this new program, the Microsoft Dynamics three sixty-five Business Central is very up to date, more user-friendly, could potentially have more connections with like point of sale and a lot of other more modern features that our current Great Plains software doesn't have, so. At some point, we have to plan on this, but I stuck it in for twenty twenty-five. And that figure there is probably high, but we have to factor in the software itself, plus the migrating all of our information into it. And then some training and other things, so it's a pretty major investment of time and so forth to do that.
Yeah, so I was wondering, what would be an adequate amount of lead time for you and staff to be, I know you can't just grab a and be like, oh, you guys got it, right? I mean, so you're going to want, I'm assuming, assuming multiple months to be able to to see what the capabilities are and train everybody and get some.
Yeah, we have a meeting coming up in April with our consultant on that, on services, and they would do most of the migration behind the scenes. They are kind of like, I don't know, licensed or whatever, service providers for Microsoft and so there's quite a bit of preparation that goes into that, and they're familiar with our, our system, and so. But I think they, and I don't remember right exactly what the number was, but I think they estimate about sixty thousand for the migration, so.
The conversion. That's understood.
And then they're also, we just had a meeting with our, my assistant, Shield, that our current IT provider there. They're doing our security cameras and stuff now too, but they're going to be changing their name to Integrity. Integrity, and so they're doing, going to be doing more camera work, and as you know, we're trying to camera and security systems, and there's better technology out there too that gets us more our robust system for monitoring things, and so I might just put a placeholder in here for twenty-five thousand for, for cameras and more.
The technology in the camera realm is getting amazing to where, you know, some of the things that we're working on now to try to upgrade are holes where we can't see things, or see one more camera there, well, some of these new cameras have better field of view and you spend a little extra money and, you know, hopefully you get five years out of them. I don't think camera life is super long, but because of that technology changing.
I'm seeing some prices dropping as they get worse.
Yeah. So anyway, relatively small amount, but good to be aware of that. And that would be mapped out over the next few years too, just kind of having continual upgrades to the system, so. Okay, next slide, Krista. And now just a clarification on our other site. Park County is a plus nine business center. We don't have any funding dedicated to that capital funding for twenty twenty-five, but just want to make sure we verify that. Next slide.
I can talk to you, I can turn the light on.
So this, this slide is a little bit of background on, people have, they consider what our, we call it the LGIP Fund, the local government or investment fund. Anyway, it's where we hold the majority of our money that's not, you know, kind of in our cash cycle for regular circulation. And so when I was at a meeting a few weeks ago with the Department of Finance Officers Association in Oregon, they had a good presentation, and I thought I'd share some of this with you on what they call rethinking reserves, and so it's basically, and if you can't, I think on your printed copies, you can see there, but there's, you can divide that money that we're holding there, that large balance in terms of putting some of it in what we would consider insurance, like that would be like if something unforeseen happened and we needed to access that cash, we were holding it for that purpose. And then the other part of the account would be reserves, more of a savings account. But within that savings account, one of the terms I used, and I thought this would be helpful for you all, is to think of it as deferred expenses. And so basically, that, that money that's in the savings account is pretty much earmarked for future projects, it's not just a fund that you can pull out for things that aren't on our, you know, longer term strategic plan, and so I think it's good to tighten that up a little bit and think about what we have in that account as you know, an insurance policy on one side, and then what those funds are going to be held for for future investments and projects that are in our strategic plan and longer term capital budget. So just wanted to think about that in terms of managing and mitigating risk, identifying strategic investments, and then just keeping in mind that our this overall in general in the economy across the board, the costs are rising. And revenue in general is not rising as quickly, it's more stagnant, so that margin swing the two is not necessarily increasing in most, most cases, and so having that reserves as insurance is a prudent way to go for looking at our financial matters, so. Anyway, next, next slide. Just some extra notes and assumptions I wanted to clarify before we move into more of the detailed financial numbers. When I did the projections and kind of the staging of our capital funding for FY twenty-five. So as you know, our FY twenty-five year begins July first of this year, twenty twenty-four. So, um, as you know, our FY twenty five year begins July first of this year, twenty twenty four. And so we're looking at starting July first through June thirtieth at twenty five. Um, and so what I'm looking at is. I'm basically excluding the operating budget just for a tool on. Where we're not putting any money into the savings account or LGIP. Or we're not taking any out for operations. It's just a, a tool for our budget. We're keeping that. That nine point two five million. Just for capital projects. So we would be pulling money out for capital projects, not operations. We wouldn't be putting any excess. Cash that we have above our operating expenses in there. So that. Just as a, as a tool, but we know in reality that's going to vary a little bit, but. Just for analysis and planning purposes, we're considering that. As I just mentioned, so, and then within that total amount. Where that reserve or that insurance policy amount of the funding would be two million as operating reserve. For those unforeseen things that may come up on the operating side and then. One million for Port West Route Reserve there as well. So that's total of three million. On the insurance side. And then we'd ask in there, I want our subtract from that nine and a quarter million. We have roughly. Four hundred and fifty thousand of that amount is what we've collected from tenants for deposit on their. Leases. And so technically that money's not something that we can release. Because it, it's owed it back to tenants. You know, provided they meet all the terms of their lease and leave the facility is in good condition, but. Perfecting that out of the available cash as well. Another thing I just wanted to reiterate is that these are estimated costs. So. Again, we're assuming that. And as we know, there's more likely than not. Going to be cost overruns or things that may be more than we're estimating.
I just, just for clarify for me once more, the two million and one million are part of the nine point three five.
Right, right, okay.
Let me make sure I understood that.
One, one other thing I, I did see on my notes, I forgot to mention is historically. Over the last couple of years, and I, I talked to Bob Goddaddy about this a little bit, but. We put anywhere from three to five hundred thousand into the LGIP each year, kind of as a. Like total. So that account has grown about that much each year. So. Just have to keep that in mind with changes in revenue coming up on the operating budget from. Last lease revenue there and some more expenses like for the new hangar building. Wanted to point that out.
We've discussed this before, but. How do we identify the one million dollar reserve for Port Western in the budget? So it's not a line item.
Well. I, I don't know the exact answer to your question, but and, and. I, we've talked with staff and, and that. We're just being prudent to include that million dollars in our analysis for. Uh, how much cash is available for capital projects? So again, it's kind of like an insurance policy. And I don't think either one of those are line item in the budget. We're just considering that as.
I'd like to be see that set up as an actual reserve fund for a couple of reasons. And one, there's some other funds that I've asked in the past to be. Created that were earmarked within the thing and after a year or two, they just kind of slip off and get forgotten. But secondly, the tenants have been very critical lately of our budget saying we don't have anything in reserve for Port Western. And they take them to the LGIP. People will say of that, but it doesn't show as a line item and. I think it would serve us well as we get into discussing how much money we have available. To invest in the repairs and improvements and seismic upgrade to the dock if we could show that. By being mixed in the pool, I think it's arguable that we'll use a little more of it or usable. And I always want to have the two million dollar reserve. For everything in the port, but I'd like to identify. So we're able to say, look, we're willing to spend all of our maintenance reserve funds, but here they are. No more. Can we create a reserve fund? I mean, on the other board I sit on, we have fire equipment reserve funds, maintenance reserve funds that. Build up for capital projects that carry over year to year.
Yes, that's certainly. Look into and I'll circle back with you on, on that. One thing to remember is ports are a little different than cities and counties where. We don't need to have the separate funds for water, sewer, roads and stuff like that. So we do have more flexibility than some other governments, but I certainly see the value in. And separating out those out whether we keep track of them internally or actually set up a separate fund. That, that can be something we discuss more and I'll do some more research on, on that. So.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not saying what you're doing is correct, but it doesn't. Meet the need that we have.
I, I, I know exactly what you're, you're. So, uh, next slide, Krista. So this slide is kind of that net. Grant factors in the net grant funding for the projects that have been identified. So. Those five projects, the two at the Marina and the three at the airport. Uh, the total cash needed for those would be the sum of those two bottom. The one point seven nine and the two point six six six. Um, and so. But again, pretty healthy grant funding versus poor cash needs, but. As we get a little further here, you'll see. More of a picture there too, but I definitely wanted to make sure you are aware of these grant funds and what projects are for. Excited. Okay, so. One of the things I was looking at is multi-year crash requirements when we look at capital projects. And so. As we know and have experienced that. Capital projects can go in phases and last over multiple fiscal years potentially. And so. Uh, when we look at a project, we want to look at it in terms of how much we need this fiscal year, the next fiscal year and so on. And so when we look at our total available funds now, we have to factor in. What's coming up so that we're hopefully setting ourselves up for continuing to do those. Feature projects and the cash needs going forward. And so it's not only, we're not only looking at FY twenty five, but we're taking into consideration. Future years. And so what I've done on this slide is again backing out those reserves. And in the tenant deposits. And it looks like our total funding, well, based on the assumptions and everything we talked about would be. Five point eight million. Available. And just in the FY twenty five capital projects that we've identified. And then I've added a five percent cushion on that amount just to give us a little bit of leeway, but. I don't know if that's conservative, but no, but anyway, I wanted to put some. Mention of that in there. And so that would actually, if we did all the projects that are identified. In the budget, we'd be about close to two million dollars short on, on cash. We don't use up the whole amount plus. Two, two million. And so. As much as we want to do all these projects, we're going to have to prioritize and not going to be able to do all of them. Some of that, the cash needs may spill over in FY twenty six, but if we start the project, we need to have the cash. Reserve where that. Another thing we have to keep in mind is all of these projects, even if they have grant funding, we'll need to pay the cash out. For the work done and then we'll have to get reimbursed for that. So we'll need some working capital there. The bridge between what we pay and what we receive back from the branding agency. So another thing to keep in mind. Other port I've been at that was in financial troubles.
Yes, we don't want to be.
We had, we had to get a line of credit from the county just to cover. That working capital till we got the grant funding back, which is. You know, how, how difficult it can be to get money from the county. So that's a long story. We won't go into that now, but anyway.
But it's unfair to. I think this is the most valuable tool in the whole budget presentation and it's important certainly. But I think. It's not that the port has spent itself in trouble here. It's to say that we have, we know we have more balls in the air than we're going to land. And that comes with grand opportunities. We'll often put a project in here, a grant application and no grant, no project. And that's kind of what some of these are. So I think it's super important that we don't just say do them all, but. I think a good, active, busy staff will always have more projects than we could fund available and then see what the grants.
Yeah, many, many ports do a budget that again had, would have all the projects in it, kind of like we're. Identifying here, but they'd have, they'd have two other columns that say funded and unfunded. And so that would give us a target is if we want to get this project done. Maybe we have, we could use some port cash for it, but what part is unfunded? And then how do we get that funding? Do we, you know, go after grants, loans? Bonds, you know, contributed funds from private industry, you know, there's however we can get that funding. We got, if it's a priority, we got to figure out how to get those, those funds, but. You know, we shouldn't just take it off the list because we don't have funding. It still needs to be on the, on the list and from my, my perspective.
That's what I was supposed to say as well. Like I said before, want to see this every time we go to approve a project, but. I love your funding, funded and unfunded list because things that, and the third factor for me is revenue producing.
I would agree with.
But you, you have presented very well.
So, and then when we look at FY twenty six. And I, I don't have these specifically detailed out on the spreadsheet, but I've got the three years, but I. Added in what we're estimating for FY twenty six on capital projects and that comes to. Almost a month or almost ten million dollars with a five hundred thousand cushion. So if you add those two, the negative amounts together from FY twenty five. And FY twenty six, that's kind of a rolling thing there. We're looking at. At twelve million dollar roughly cash shortfall, our deficit. And so as you can see, as we move forward, if we don't manage our cash and. Current year that influences what we can do in future years or affects, affects what we can do. So. Just wanted to kind of give you. Snapshot here. And so. Uh, again, these are all estimates, but it's a tool. That's what a budget is. And so it's our best inform. I, I used to say yes, but it is. And so. These all change throughout the year and can be monitored. So now I'll move on to the. Conglomeration, the consolidation of all the projects. So go ahead, Krista. And I know you all have printed copies, so it's easier to see on the printed copies, but and I, I'm kind of a. Divided out by colors. I should, hopefully nobody has colored line, but there's different colors there. So just to explain this. A little bit, it's on the left side. I said, I put line numbers so we can actually identify. Line numbers if it's easier, you know, like include mine number. One or four, you know, what, however it works out. And then if you want, we could have notes where it's on the funding status there. And then it identifies what site it is and the description of the project. Um, and then as we go, keep going to the right, it'd be the. Our secured grant revenue as of today, we might get more grant revenue. As time goes on, but this is what we have secured right now. For the projects, we talked about one point seven five million. And then the next. There are two columns there. Would be what we need cash wise, whatever cash requirements are. And so it goes down for each project. Each line item and shows the amount of port cash needed. And that adds up to that seven point three seven nine million. And so. The total of those, those two would be. Well, excuse me, that factors in, that's the ground amount. So. Anyway, the total there I have circled and, and red. Um, and that you got to keep in mind, we only have the five point two or whatever, whatever is. Available. So that's where are we going to cut on these projects there? And then. The twenty, then I have the total of future projects through twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, the three years, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight. And that comes to what we identified approximately fifty four million dollars. Um, so there's a lot of unfunded projects there. But again, good to identify them and, you know, as over time in the next. Couple of years, you know, there might be projects that drop off. There may be projects that we add. So. But this kind of gives us a snapshot. And then the total of twenty five and twenty six is. Roughly sixty one, sixty two million dollars. So. Just looking out a couple of years. And so.
I will say we do, we do get a lot of grant information coming in and people like, hey, you're applying for this, the challenge is, as many of you know. That they have to have a certain level of readiness. So a lot of what we're going to be doing over these next couple of years is, is. In an effort to get, to get more money, uh, trying to get us, you know, design and engineering on things. Uh, and I know. Between Lacey and Gina, the amount of money that they're looking to get, attending webinars on benefit cost analysis for grants and. How to make your grant, you know, look good. And it's definitely paying off the, the time they're spending and definitely grateful for that. But. Uh, I think there's a lot more that, uh, when somebody says, well, why don't you guys go out for the PID P grant, you know, the big federal one. Well. After we get Connect Oregon ready for, you know, if we get that grant, we get the design engineering on, on birth two and then the seismic upgrades. Modernization, that's the good step to actually apply for that. So it's hard to ask for those things when we don't have, you know, plans. So.
And it's fair to say, and this is kind of was getting at earlier. You apply for a grant for a big capital project that you haven't shown in your budget for years. It looks like. You're just jumping on the bandwagon and hurting grants for it. Or I think if you've shown it in the budget and then even better, spend some money engineering, but. Even just having it in your budget. Improve your grant opportunities.
And our strategic plan, yeah.
Yeah, strategic.
The strategic plan and my capital budget, you know, should be. So, and I think maybe when we did these projects, we did have kind of our new strategic. Plan in place there. So they do marry up pretty well. Uh, on that, of course, all, all the amounts and the strategic plan aren't going to exactly. Catch what our capital budget projections are, but you know, they're included in the strategic plan.
It, it looks to me like if I was going to prioritize these, all these, um, project, capital projects. I would need to do it in two ways. There's some of these that may not be as high on my priority list, but the grant opportunities look like they're. Ready to go. I don't want to put them at the bottom. But to me, some of these would be rated A if we get the grant and then B if we don't.
Yeah, one and, and. I'll, I'll go down a road that may be a little. Rocky, but one thing to consider and, you know, you. I don't know how much you want to talk about it. It's, it's meeting it. It should probably be its own work session and it's more. You know, consideration, preparation before we talk about it, but. You know, there's significant amount of money going towards the Marina for cash, even though we do have the grant funds. And just for reference, the Marina is operates in the red. And depending on how you calculate some of the operating costs like for staff and so on. And what, how much they allocate time to the Marina. You know, that could be anywhere from, I, I'm, I'm just going to guess like three hundred thousand in the red. And so, and then you combine that with the. Ongoing commitment for maintenance dredging. That, you know, we're looking at roughly two million dollars of cash and then it's all dredged in fifteen, two thousand fifteen, is that right? Sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah.
Yeah. And so we're. Yeah, and so we're looking at roughly seven, eight years, you know, on that, um. So we, how, you know, how do we plan for that? And like we mentioned, the grant funding is not. Easy to come by for maintenance dredging, so um you know, if we didn't get grant funding, that would make it even more challenging. Another thing to consider is um, the, the accessway from the marina to the. Probably a river there in the mountain, on the channel is, is uh shallow or is that spoiling. Maybe, you know, getting worse over, over time, more shallow and so uh. You know, we could have the marina dredged at an optimal depth. Uh at a pretty significant cost and not be able to connect to the river, so you know, doesn't make sense for us to. Continue to maintain that boat for more deeper draft recreational boats, or do we go to a non-motorized? Boat marina or, you know, boats that don't have, don't, don't draw as much water. So uh I think that's something you guys really need to get your arms around, um and. You know, and not, and, and an idea I would have is to do an actual feasibility study on the marina, just to. Firmly identify the numbers there, um so we're talking facts and not just emotions or. You know, assumptions or things like that, so um anyway, I know that's. A lot bigger topic than we have on the agenda now, but I think it would be helpful to. Kind of, and I'm finding that seat, I guess I'm being bold or whatever, but um it does factor in to the, to the uh. Budget, so.
Prior dredging in that marina, wasn't it like twenty plus years ago from, from this one?
Less than that.
No, no, prior to fifteen, excuse me. Twenty years, that's what I thought, yeah, I thought, I thought it was. Uh but I, I said with Sean the other day, I mean, I hundred percent agree, I mean, you could dredge this marina till, you know, it's perfect. So it's, it's not gonna be any good because you're, you're stuck with outside of those buoys. Um, you know, right now it's fine, but summertime, you're gonna have three foot of draft, so it's not gonna matter, so.
And, and this is kind of what I was talking about having on our books, I saw a project in Clatsop County that when I first tripped the PNWA in about. Two thousand and six or something was on our advocate list. And I didn't even know about it, but I learned about it and it was on there every year and it took. Uh ten years for the Teaven Rock Terminal, but they did get the federal funding with the argument that um. The, the same issue, if they did their draft, the channel went, they couldn't get out to the river anyway, so to me, if, if we can't get that. Channel there, that the connector drafted, it sounds like a federal dredge project to me and. I'd like to get it on the PNWA's list and, and the guy who shepherded it through for Teaven, Paul Langner, to have consulted with us. And I think he might have some thoughts or be helpful on how we can.
I, I, I think we're kind of looking at it, um I look at it kind of differently as well, I mean. Even if it's a three foot draft marina, right, low, low water. Ninety percent of your vessels, powerboats are gonna be able to go in and out just fine, I know that sounds really, it's not gonna be a big deal. As long as the float houses are staying afloat, I mean, we, that's a tailor made thing for tourism and kayaks right there, right? I mean, that's what everybody likes going in there and doing. Um eventually, I know I brought it up before, we may need to look at another uh just parking lot type. Boat launch that is a self, I mean, we obviously have proper, and it's not possibly feasibly usable and I. Shouldn't say that on a no further action piece where the shop is, I mean, because we're just kicking the can down the tracks, I mean, it just, it's always gonna be that way. And it's, that's never gonna change right there, I mean, that little hump between Evenson's and the marina. It's a, it's been that way since I can remember, so.
And even if we do dredge it, it's gonna.
Yeah, it'll be the same thing again, I mean, it's just nothing we can do about it, a- and it's. Um if I Mary would know, I believe it's contaminated to a certain level, so you're gonna spend. Big money trying to get that out of there, um and I'm, you're, that's crazy money, they might have to go incinerate that, take it to wherever the. Nearest side is to take it, so it's, it's not an easy thing.
Just a quick recap, though, we, we, uh twenty sixteen, I, I, our permit, I think we. Excavated, dredged about fifty thousand cubic yards, this time we were going for seventy plus-ish. And we were expanding the footprint a little bit to include a little bit of the, of the channel entrance, we call it the channel, but it's not a.
Sure.
I don't think it's federally now, you know, it's not under the cores jurisdiction, but the channel into the marina, uh and then we're told, as you know, that we can't touch that. Um and so that's, that's what we gotta find out either from DSL or OSMB. What are our options now that, you know, why would we create a bathtub here if we can't connect it, but um. We'll get some more information on that to, to find out if, if it could be on the, you know, the PWA list or. Some of these list or.
But I, either way, like we're saying, obviously we'll want to keep the float houses there, right, and you gotta keep them afloat, you can't have it, you know, you gotta have a certain depth maintained there. I mean, and kayaks need this much water, so, you know, that's, you know, it's uh, it's kind of a. You know, devil's sword there, certain.
Unfortunately, the kayak here is the only one that's gonna be easy to dredge, so.
Right, the cleanest material.
I'm, I'm just saying.
Clean that well.
That, that may have came off wrong too, but I mean, ninety percent of your powerboats coming in out of there are like a, a twenty foot and under type. You know, maybe some bigger twenty four foot guide sleds, you know, some things are drafted afoot. I mean, we're, we're not talking, there are a few sailboats and stuff in there that are, that are deeper draft, but. It may be something down the road that we have to really think about, like you brought up yourself, yeah.
I, I'm.
No, no, go ahead.
I mean, the reason I kind of bring this up a little more boldly is we have these projects scheduled for. FY twenty five, once that cash goes out. Doesn't come back in and, and we're actually um. Losing money operating the marina, so we're actually losing more than what we're putting to it. Um and I, I completely one hundred percent realize this is a, you know, community asset, there's. Public interest in this and, you know, there's a lot of things that need to be taken into consideration, but. Money, your funding is pretty black and white or black and red, you know, and so. You know, we just need to be realistic and be, uh, you know, future priorities and whether. You know, we do want to add to our operating revenue and try and keep growing our. Operating revenue uh to make more strategic investments or we want, whether we want to invest in. Projects that don't add to our uh operating revenue, uh so.
I have one, one question that I was actually looking at some of this yesterday. I didn't ask then, but the, the amount of money it's going to cost to do the um. The um seismic upgrades on the docks at Port West were twenty, was it twenty, twenty six thousand? Um twenty two million, excuse me, where were we thinking that money was coming from? The money tree, no, um, I mean, there's no way that even if we put, you know, if we went back to the other lease. Uh, you know, amount of money from, from next, there's no way that's gonna cover, I don't think, I mean, you, or we take every bit of. That every year to cover that.
And, and that is over some, spread out over some time too, but um, you know, the idea would be. Hopefully we have our, our package together, we can get some grant money, but I mean, still, we have to match the, whatever grant we get, we gotta match too, so a certain amount. Uh yeah, there's a lot of unanswered questions, is it, you know, that is a revenue producer, the dock is, do we try to get a revenue bond?
No, I didn't mean to steal your.
No, no, I agree. Um, yeah, a lot of, a lot of questions that we will have to answer, yeah.
And over what amount of time does that? To have that, of those seismic upgrades done, I said, we're talking ten years?
Um, yeah, yeah.
And keep in mind. If that project goes forward. The dock gen worthage generated from that second tenant would be enormous and it would open up avenues of financing that project that. Okay, I think would. I don't know if I would use the word easy, but it would be.
It would be, it would be much closer than it appears, sitting here, right?
As we're sitting here with the single users.
Right.
Questions are there about.
Right, okay.
I know this is probably could be a whole meeting in itself, but like as far as seismic upgrades, if we're talking new piles, replacing, okay, got you.
It'll look a lot more like the pipe bridge.
Understood, okay.
Thank you.
And every port in Oregon is gonna be under the same.
No, we're the only ones.
What?
Because primarily Royal Terminal, the oil company owns it, and I, I think we're an unintended victim of this, but I think that also opens the door. To uh funding because. We are a public entity that's been given this mandate.
It was for tank farms and we have the connection.
It's gear, it's storage tanks and then extends to us because of the dock.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm assuming New Star and Litton and they already have this done.
Uh, they fall under this, they are using their own term.
Understood.
Or they lease it from someone, that's not a public entity.
Right, right, okay, understood, yeah, that makes sense, you got it.
Keep in mind, the irony is that what makes us fall under the mandate is PGE using tanks and the least participant in any dock maintenance. And the folks who gave us a dock that had been unmaintained for thirty years is PGE, so to me, that's a factor that needs to.
Huge, yeah.
They need to step up.
Well, I guess on the plus side, we won't have a lot of competition for, I mean, we're the only ones.
We hope it helps our case because we're the only public entity that's affected by, at least a port that's affected by the, the legislation, so.
Okay.
Maybe that helps us.
That, that should help us.
Yeah.
You know, there's only how many public ports on the, on our lives. Great, thank you.
It's, that's all for design and engineering, right, so it's a step by step.
And, and that needs to be done.
Yeah.
So we know, yeah, we, we've clarified the numbers and.
Yeah.
Has Brian been able to hear everything okay?
He thumbs up this.
Got thumbs.
So, you know, um in terms of where I led this by is going from here, uh you know, of course. Discussion I think is definitely warranted on all these. Uh items, but it may be something we want to come back to after, you know. Thinking over things a little more, I know, um this is all kind of a. New process to go through, maybe, I don't know exactly what's been done in the past, but um. With my experience and stuff I've done, we've worked out a couple of years on the capital budget related items, um. It's out of necessity because we can't do it all and, and, and so uh. You know, I, I mean, we're, we, and we're very fortunate to have the reserve or the reserves. Uh that savings amount plus the um insurance or the, you know, part and so. You know, we really need to be good stewards of that, that, that funding because once it goes out, it doesn't mean that it. Comes back in easily, so um just really need to think about. What our priorities are and that's kind of where, where we're at, at this point and so. Um, you know, the, I think we'll have future discussions on this, but I, I wanted to get feedback from you guys. Uh before we started really formulating that final budget when we wrap in the operating. Uh budget and when we do get the operations, operating budget uh firmed up. And we, we put the two together, I mean, it'll inform us more on whether that nine point two five million. If we'll have to tap into that or we'll be able to add into it, um and so that's gonna be another factor. That we have to look at it because if that nine point two five million end up having to. Pull any money out for potential uh operating expenses. You know, it's gonna lower that if we have excess cash to add to that nine point two five million, that'll give us a little more. Buffer and so um those numbers aren't firmed up now, but um that's where we're going in April and May and so. This kind of outlook is, as far as I'm, my direction I'm going, but want as much uh. Feedback from all of you so we can identify which projects that we're going to fund and FY twenty five and which ones are gonna be. Unfunded, uh and so that's, that's the goal, that's where I'd like to get and uh. Uh again, I don't know if you wanna, how much you want to talk about it today or. You know, if we want to come back and talk about it some more at the next meeting, um that's up to you guys, uh. Uh did you have any other questions for me at this point?
No, this is very sobering.
Just say no, I mean, I take the bad news, but the way you're putting it together is extremely helpful, I mean.
Very.
We won't shoot the messenger.
Oh, for sure, I didn't bring any chicken wire.
But by being brutally honest, we can make better decisions, which means we can actually do more. If I didn't know all this, I'd be afraid to do a lot of the things that we probably can't do, so. Real estate acquisitions that will form in their futures are likely.
Not likely.
Well, um if you don't have any other questions, uh I'll step back here and let Elliot have the stage, so.
My only question is, what, when are you presenting this to the budget committee?
Um that formally will be in, in May, but uh I, I, I plan on reaching out to them for some info in advance and so.
And who is on the budget committee?
And we're going to be firming that up at the next meeting, have a resolution, we have three new uh people that'll be coming on. And I'm still.
We can prove it.
Yeah, resolution. I'm assuming you'll prove it, but um, and then there's, there's two budget committee members from before and I'm firming up. Um make sure they can serve, um and, and we don't, we're trying to get five altogether. And this year would especially be great to have five, not that it's every, it's a requirement, I believe all of the time, but. Uh definitely helps to have. Or have more eyes looking on this and more feedback.
Absolutely.
So.
And giving them enough time to, to do a deep dive with you.
Because I certainly don't have all the answers, this is, you know, my, my approach to it, my perspective and, you know, feedback, so. Um, doesn't mean that. You know, it's right, uh entirely, so I'm open to any kind of suggestions or feedback, other approaches that other. People may uh want to pursue, so uh.
Yeah, the potential new candidates is watching the meeting right now, Rachel Berry. Rachel Berry, Paul Langner, Bob Godati, but Rachel Berry's on the, on the zone.
Good.
Thank you, Rachel, and Bob Godati.
Bob Godati's on the zone.
Yeah, apologies for texting, but it's for a meeting here this afternoon.
Well, any, if you don't have anything else, I'll step back here, but glad to talk with you more individually or however you like to reach out, so. I'm sorry, it's a little maybe not the most exciting news, but. What it is, so.
So we clear, he's not investing any of the port funds in the powerball, so I know it's tempting, but the jackpot's being.
Or a billion last night.
Wasn't me.
It wasn't me, all that.
Sure you would want it.
Reds. You bet. Yes, sir, sorry, that's. Coming for the meeting this afternoon. Resolution, I just need the number. Twenty twenty four dash oh four. Surprised this didn't come up sooner, actually. I mean, I have a timeline since the accident.
I have to uh fall on the sword on that, I, I know we talked early on about emergency permits.
Yeah.
We just never formally declared an emergency, so my apologies.
And that's what this does, so good morning commissioners, it's nice to see you all. If approved, resolution twenty twenty four dash oh four. Would formally declare the November twelfth, twenty twenty three barge collision with the downstream approach and emergency for public contracting purposes. This incident qualifies as an emergency due to the related risk of loss and interruption of services. Since then, we have worked hard with CPBR to build a temporary pipe bridge and return the berth to service. CPBR has managed its work efficiently despite operating under significant time constraints. That work is now largely complete, in fact, we expect to be complete by mid month and we expect regular service to return during April. At the beginning of January, the port received in advance of one million dollars from the insurance uh company. And to date, we have not used that money. However, over the last few weeks, uh we've started to receive reimbursement from CPBR. Uh for the costs incurred uh on the port's behalf and. uh, on the port's behalf and restoring our share of the approach. So attached, uh, to the staff report and resolution is a rough estimate of the port's cost of restoring the berth. To date, we've received invoices of roughly $680,000 and we estimate the total cost of the port share will be around 1.1 million. Uh, the total cost of the pipe bridge is, uh, just over $6 million. While we are still working with underwriters to process these invoices, we want to be in a position to reimburse CPBR, uh, for any undisputed amounts as soon as we can, and thus we are asking you to approve resolution 2024-04.
Move to approve resolution 2024-04.
Second. And moved by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Buble to approve, to approve resolution 2024-04, declaring an emergency at Port Westridge. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. I'm, I'm, yeah, please, hi.
Hi, sorry, I can't help you myself, so.
Thank you, commissioners.
Executive Director.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Good morning. Um, thanks for Nancy and, uh, Lacy and Krista and Mr. Fawcett for attending the South County Chamber event on Saturday, the 23rd. Um, we did not win the Sustainable Business of the Year award. But we, we had some representation there, so that was great.
Who didn't?
Um.
I bet half for humanity.
Yes, thank you. I was busy one day.
That breaks. Yeah.
I'd go for them.
Yeah. Uh, let's see, things of note here, we met yesterday with our consultant to go over some Beaver Dock stuff, Elliot's tracking that very well. They're helping us with the conceptual and the, uh, modernization planning. Uh, meeting with Craig Campbell, O'Mac today for lunch. We've been meeting, uh, occasionally, just trying to figure out if there's something that, you know, we should be doing together and just keeping in contact related to that. Uh, been meeting with, uh, PCC, O'Mac, Patty Hawkins, um, talking with her about, um, possibility of some coursework related to maritime and or transportation things that I took away from the, the Long Beach trip, uh, for the Association of Pacific Ports last year. Um, some things they're doing down there. Um, they're definitely interested and, you know, they're trying to expand things out there. Um, so we're going to keep talking and try to get together on some. It's just a lot of different training that I saw that Long Beach Community College had that would help people trying to get in the logistics industry. Dispatching, just different learning the lingo and stuff like that could be really great because those jobs are really good entry paths into other things. Logistics, port authorities, whatever, related transportation. Um, let's see.
Have you renewed?
Yes. Yeah, when you're getting into it and you're learning the stuff, it's all neat and stuff, but it'd be nice to have a little playbook or something to, to help you out when you're starting to get into that. Uh, let's see, we have the upcoming, uh, Saturday, four, six, the next week, next Saturday is the Scapoose Annual Town Meeting. And we'll have some representation there. Um, we do have the, uh, the signup sheet coming around for events and then Jane is on vacation right now, but, um, we will be passing that around to see who wants to sign up to help. I will definitely be at the four, six event. It's Scapoose. Also later that night, uh, I think at 5:30 is the Center of Jeff Merkley Town Hall meeting. I sent you guys some info. Commissioner Ward is, uh, interested in attending that. Um, no worries if we have a quorum, we just know not to talk together or, uh, about port stuff. Um, so I will send a, the location's TBD. We're still waiting to find out where they're going to hold that. I'm guessing it's going to be PCC O'Mac, but we'll find out. First train of renewable diesel is still en route?
Yes, it's delayed till tomorrow.
Yeah, that's, so that's the first shipment since the incident. As you know, what the vessel that came on March 7th picked up product that was already here. So.
Uh, yesterday sitting in the rail yard in Portland.
Oh, yes.
I think that one might be going elsewhere.
Oh, really?
Yeah, ours says it's in Paswell, right?
Yeah.
Okay, there's one, there's one.
Too, so I was driving to work, so I think that's going to.
Uh, and then St. Helens Citizens Day in the Park is the next event we're going to be attending and that's in June, Saturday, June 22nd. Uh, I'll also let you know that some of you may realize that we're locking the front door and the reason for that is, uh, we had a security audit done by a local, um, security consultant. Um, and some of that, some of the things that he was talking to us about were going to be tied into the potential addition and upgrades. We were going to remodel some of the uh, existing footprint, right, to increase the security, create a lobby was part of the plan. Uh, short of that, the, the easiest thing we could do to, to protect front office staff is lock the door. Uh, and, you know, we've got people up there most of the time anyway. Um, we'll look, Guy and I are kind of still working through some of the particulars on it, but currently we haven't had any issues. I've asked about the feedback and of course people are asking, oh, you're locking the door? Yeah. So we have some other, uh, ideas on how to keep that more of a barrier, maybe a screen, security screen door as well, or a ring doorbell cam or something like that where, you know, you wouldn't necessarily be opening up the door to somebody that might have malintent. Um, so we're still working through some of that, but the, the door locking was the easiest thing and he called, you know, something he called out and having that information, I felt like having that information, not do anything would have been really upsetting had something might have happened. So, uh, you know, we're not expecting anything to happen. There's been no threat. There's nothing that we know about. It's just a proactive measure. So.
Are you planning to put some kind of a notice on the door?
Absolutely. Yeah. Well, yeah, once we figure out the, how we have it dialed, but so far I think we're doing well with the coverage on, hey, I'm, you know, someone's going to the break room, hey, watch the door or whatever. So I don't know that there's been anybody stranded there at the door waiting to get in yet. So.
I feel that for me yesterday, it was like, this can't be locked. What's going on here, you know? And there was no one at the front office. So.
No note.
So I knocked on the door and I came, but yeah, it just seems like it'd be easy to put a note up of some kind, how people are supposed to interact if there's no one watching.
Yeah, this is our interim solution. So, yeah, Guy and I will get our heads together and figure out, uh, what makes sense for the mid to long term until, you know, some, it's short of making a lobby there like we talked about, which we may not have to wait for a re, uh, the addition project, but I, I know it's a little bit of money to do what we want to do because we got to move a door to the hall and create a wall there. Yeah, a lot of stuff. So. Um, and then also, uh, just let you know that, uh, I'll, I'll send this out electronically. I've included a couple of articles that have come up here recently that'll be on the electronic too. So. Any questions? Thank you all.
For your reports.
Great job on this budget. Really eye opener, broke it out for me. Um, really appreciate that. Looks like you're doing a great job on our grant stuff. Thanks for everybody's help with that. Appreciate it.
Same thing. I really valued the opportunity to be here yesterday with Guy and Nancy and Tom and learn, learn about it. And it's, it's a really good start for getting this budget done.
Totally agree. Yeah. And this is, this is just exactly the kind of thing we need. And also want to mention, and I think I've been mentioning it a lot lately, but it seems like every time we have a meeting, things improve in the way that we're presenting our material, not only to the commissioners, but to the public as a whole. And I really, really appreciate it. I think we all really appreciate and I really want to acknowledge Krista. She's had a tremendous influence on upgrading our presentation. So thank you. Yeah. Uh, I went to the chamber, uh, event, was very, very well attended, um, lots of enthusiasm. It's, it's really fun to see a community so engaged in this kind of a thing, uh, of, of acknowledging the people in the county who go the extra mile and put themselves out there to, for no other reason but to improve the way we live here in our county. So it was, it was a really good event. Bit long, a bit long, but other than that, it was really great. Lots of energy, good energy in the room. And we had a agricultural committee meeting, um, and I do believe Brenda has sent you the, uh, is that right? She was going to be sending you the.
Perhaps, maybe check some spam.
Yeah, yeah. So want to be sure we get her on the agenda for, uh, the next meeting. And, um, yeah, really anxious to, to see what she has been able to put together in the way of this project that we're looking at. And there was also a lot of discussion about some changes in the county and land use development and the way it affects people who work from home. Want to get a little bit, uh, we were fortunate to have, uh, Commissioner, uh, Casey Garrett at the meeting on Monday who gave us a lot of additional information about what's going on there, but I'm still not conversant enough to feel confident about talking about it as if I know what I'm talking about. But I do think it's something we all need to be aware of. This is affecting, uh, across the board, people who do any kind of work from home. And it's, uh, it's all, it's not a change. Apparently there have been rules and regulations regarding this like forever, but it's all complaint driven. So people who complain about, for instance, someone who's baking bread at home and selling it commercially. So this complaint driven process has caused, um, a lot of confusion about how people can operate if they're working from home. So I do think it's of interest to all of us and so hopefully we can get more information as this moves through a process of hopefully changing and making it more, um, available for people to, to, and for government, uh, agencies to recognize that people are working from home, whether they're just working on their computer or whether they're making jewelry or whatever. People are working from home a lot more than, than they used to, especially since the pandemic. So I do think it's of interest to all of us and I just would like us to keep our ears open and hopefully have, uh, an ability to get a better understanding of how this is going to affect businesses here in Columbia County.
I can't get my lemonade stand from the corner lemonade store. I'm going to be really ticked. They're going to shut down stuff like that or?
Well, it's, it's, like I say, I'm, I'm just not willing to step into it because I don't know enough about it, but I do think we need to, to be following this story and apparently there are lots of people working on it, uh, to see how a an equitable resolution can be reached. And so I'd just like to keep in touch with Commissioner Garrett and maybe even have him come here and, and talk to us about it in the future.
Commissioner Garrett also always wanted to just get together and have a little recognition of the port and the county working together to close down the urban renewal district. So it might be worth bringing him to do both.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth noting that that we did have work together. We did what was supposed to happen. So.
Right.
And he said the same thing. So that went okay well.
Yeah.
Is that everything?
That's it.
Do you, do you want to invite him personally, or would you like me to reach out to?
Oh, yeah. Why don't you guys?
Okay.
Coordinate it.
Got it.
Yeah, really appreciated him attending the meeting and, um, also want to acknowledge Andrew Levy, who has been attending almost all the meetings. So it's really nice having this extra participation in this new venture. And I hope everybody, um, you know, will be tuning in for Brenda's presentation because I think this is going to be, you know, hopefully something that we're going to be proud of. And hopefully being able to work towards, um, a completion of a project that seems to be well needed in the, uh, in the county.
I'd like to hear the update on the other lady who was with her.
Yes, Hannah. And I thought about that too. I think maybe, um, inviting Hannah to come, um, along with Brenda because the two of them presented together before. So yeah, let's, let's see if that might be a possibility.
Brenda, do you have anything to do?
Can everybody hear me?
Mr. Fawcett, any comments?
Can anybody, can everybody hear me or no?
Speaking.
He is speaking.
Uh, we're not hearing you, Brian.
Uh, what about now? No?
Yes.
Can anybody hear me? I switched microphones and.
There we go. Okay, go ahead.
You can hear me? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, I don't really have too many updates. I, I do, uh, echo the other commissioners' comments in regards to the information that Guy presented and, uh, staff helped prepare. Really, really excellent. Um, it's going to be helpful in, in making decisions about these capital projects and, uh, I'm kind of looking for maybe a staff recommendation on what we should do based on what sort of revenue we might expect from these different projects and that sort of thing. So, um, I also attended the South County, uh, Chamber event. It was definitely long. Uh, there were some good networking opportunities, uh, had a good time. It was, uh, just good to chat with other business owners and whatnot. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, all I had was, it was on sick on April 6th. It's the lucky week, you know, from the North Counties. Be there for that. Come and I noticed I was kind of disappointed that today was our, our budget workshop, which I think has gone really well. It's exactly what I envisioned for the commission to have direct input before the budget's put together. Um, but no representation from Oval Partners, Next Energy or PGE that I'm aware of. And here we are discussing the future and the capital, biggest capital project we've ever seen. Um, I'm just surprised by that. Um, again, I, Guy, what you gave us is extremely helpful and what I've always wanted to have in this workshop. So thank you. And lastly, just.
Would it be possible to engage them before?
Yeah, certainly. In fact, I don't, I don't want to complicate guys either, but, uh, does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah, and I want to talk more in the executive session.
Okay.
Uh, okay. Um, lastly, just prayers for the Port of Baltimore and City of Baltimore and everybody watching that was eye opening for me and there's, it looks like one thing can happen to any port and things could change dramatically as we've seen with, with ours. Praise for them. Take a short break and have an executive session.
Yes. Would you like me to read this exciting spread?
Always.
The Port of Columbia County will now meet an executive session pursuant to RS 192660, section two F, to consider exempt public records, including written legal advice from myself, which is privileged and exempt from disclosure. Representatives of the news media and designated staff are allowed to attend. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the discussions or deliberations that occur during this or any executive session. Or commissioner will return to open session and we do not expect and to announce any decisions that are the results of discussions held in executive session. Any persons excluded from executive session are welcome to return to open session when it is resumed.
And I will announce to anybody listening online that the only business after will be adjournment. So nothing else. You're welcome to come back in, but it will just be for adjournment. See you in a couple of minutes. Further business, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.